Master a standard. We focus on quality rather than completion and proficiency versus behavioral attributes for work completion. As a parent, it's my dream for my children, especially my son, to be able to tell me what skill he is having difficulty with instead of playing the game of grades. What I mean by that is that he tends to take on, well, he takes his dad and I, on an emotional roller coaster and an exhausting semesterly ride of not doing his homework, getting mediocre test or quiz grades because he didn't study or practice. And then two weeks before the end of the semester, he starts to turn in all of his missing work and aces a test to bring his grade up from a low D or C to an acceptable B in our household. I know he's capable of better grades. I hope he's not listening. In his mind, it's not about what he's learning or how he's getting to mastery. It's about the outcome of the final grade, and he has the equation figured out down to the required point.
Excuse me, Ms. Sorry, Mr. Graham. We have no sound on the recording that people are watching.
It's going. It gets on.
Okay. Go ahead. Apologize. Yes, you go right ahead.
I want him to know what skills are his strengths and weaknesses in order to reach the level of mastery in which he is capable. I want to talk with him about what he's learning and why, and I want him to retain these skills rather than cram, forget, and move on. This is a standards-based mindset. Think about the game of tennis. If my goal is to play the game of tennis by the end of the year, I have a lot of work to do. I first need to learn the rules, how to hold the racket, how to use a forehand swing, how to backhand, how to serve. These are all learning progressions, the pieces or the skills I need to learn in order to master the goal or standard. I know that my weakness is my backhand and my serve. I can identify that I need to focus on these skills before I can master my standard. A great coach will work with me on these progressions until I'm ready to move on or be assessed, just like a teacher does for his or her students using a standards-based mindset. Okay. Briefly, the story of the standards-based mindset in DVUSD began years ago. We did a lot of pedagogy-based learning, both as administrators and with our teachers, through book studies, PDs, and discussions over the years. We've been able to find the connections from PDSA and PLC to the important roles our student goal-setting and reflection drive their learning and our instruction. We've made the shift from following a curriculum basal page by page to understanding our state standards and using the curriculum as a resource to support our instruction. The phased-in approach to implementation was by choice, by principles of schools who felt that their teachers had the knowledge and the capacity to implement, as well as their staff's capacity for change during the pandemic. There is a strong connection between the meaningful PLC work and a standards-based mindset.
Good evening, President O'Brien, members of the board, Dr. Finch, and guests. My name is Abby McKinney, and I teach 5th grade ELA at Terramar Elementary School. We are tasked with telling you about what our release day looks like for our multi-school collaborative team. So I'm going to start with what our agenda looks like. So we start with introductions and celebrations. This is a time for our team morale building, so what we are doing right. We create collective team commitments that we're going to abide by to make sure that we are efficient and successful during our time together. We move on to discuss data. So there is a data protocol that we follow, which is steps we follow to engage with the data on a deeper level. And we have a data sheet for recording where we input our data from our most recent CFA. Discussion follows about what strategies and resources we are implementing.
Will you move your microphone closer to your mouth? When you look down, it's not capturing you. Thank you.
Yep. We move on to a discussion time where we discuss strategies and resources that we're implementing that are positively affecting our student achievement. So this is time for sharing successful practices that we use in the learning environment that helps students reach mastery of the standards. We move on to unwrapping the upcoming unit and module with essential standards. So we look ahead at standards we have predetermined will be taught, and we hone in on the progressions that will lead our students towards mastery. Then we venture off into the world for lunch, which is special. We'll come back after lunch, and we have upcoming unit pacing and instructional plan. So we calendar out our CFAs, and we work together to create those common formative assessments. So this is time for our collaborative input and valuable discussions about what demonstration of mastery of the standards looks like and designing assessments so that students can show us that they have mastered those particular standards. The ladies that follow are going to go into further detail on the specific components of our agenda. So we have Lisa Noble next.
My name is Lisa Noble. I teach 5th grade at Northera Canyon. I'm talking to tell you about when we create assessments and analyze the data, it's a continuous process. Before arriving at our meeting, teachers will have given, analyzed, and entered data from the CFA into the data meeting spreadsheet. We come together to share data and the big-picture ideas about that data. This is referred to as the "here's what." Celebrations are noted, and then we move on to talk about Tier 1 instruction. We talk about trends that we see and make notes about the proficiency levels among the students. This is a time to identify student strengths and weaknesses, as well as to address any common trends that we notice in analyzing the data. This is the "so what" phase of the process. Together, teachers identify strategies that will address common challenges and practices for meeting the student's specific needs. In talks about Tier 2 approaches, we talk about the "now what," and we address a collective plan to target learning for each proficiency level. In addition, a plan is set to reevaluate minimally and partially proficient students.
My name is Jill Riker, and I'm a 5th grade ELA teacher at Inspiration Mountain School. And I'd like to talk to you a little bit about our data sheet. When you have access to the link, you will see an example of our data sheet that we use. You're going to see that when we give our assessments, we put data in after we've given our common assessment. We look at the proficiency of each standard that we've assessed during that common formative assessment. We then focus in on strengths and challenges within each teacher's cohort. Using that information, we're able to find trends, share strategies with one another, and plan for reteaching and reassessment so that we're spiraling back to those standards that need some more refining. I'd like to introduce Mallory Hudson to you.
All right. Good evening, President O'Brien, members of the board, and Dr. Finch. My name is Mallory Hudson. I teach at Canyon Springs STEM Academy. I'm going to be explaining our PLC planning document. So to plan, we first start by unpacking a standard. We locate nouns and verbs within the standard. We also then determine academic vocabulary that is necessary for understanding of the standard for both teachers and students. From there, we work together to brainstorm strategies to be used within our classroom for learning as well as for enrichment opportunities. We use this to then create a student-friendly objective that we ensure still encompasses all parts of the standard and that students are able to understand. We then begin working on our learning progressions. These progressions go from simple to complex. Each learning progression is a stepping stone towards success and mastery of the standard. We then locate assessment sample items from past AZMARA and/or AASA assessments. We may also use other states that use similar standards such as Florida or Ohio. Finally, we use the AZ Department of Education performance level descriptors to develop rubrics that our students use daily within the classroom. And Ms. Carr is going to explain our rubrics a bit more.
All right. Good evening, President O'Brien, members of the board, and Dr.
You'll have to, yeah. Thank you.
All right. Let me start over. Good evening, President O'Brien, members of the board, and Dr. Finch. My name is Jessica Carr, and I teach at Union Park School. And today, I'm honored to share with you our student data folder, which consists of our standards-based rubrics. Our 5th grade multi-school team has created these student-friendly rubrics by using the performance level indicators provided by the Arizona Department of Education as a guide. We refer to these rubrics when we create assessments and planning lessons to make sure students become proficient in Arizona State standards. We discuss each standard rubric with our students so they have a clear understanding of what they need to be able to do to demonstrate their knowledge of the standard. This happens in my room daily so that students understand our daily learning intention and a learning goal for our next assessment. Parents have access to the rubrics on my website, and there's also a link embedded in my weekly newsletter.
Thank you. So I have a quick question. All of the things that you just talked about can be used whether or not, or would be used, right? Whether or not we use standard-based grading, is that correct?
President O'Brien, members of the board, Dr. Finch, everything but the rubric and the way we write our tests is very different than the old way. When we write our tests, we identify them, each item by standard. That standard goes in grades.
Let me rephrase my question. I apologize. I didn't ask you what I meant. So standards, because we want kids to know what they're learning or what they need to learn. So the scoring system, all of this can be done, no matter what the scoring system is, correct? Or would be done? No? Okay. No.
No, it would not be done this way.
Hmm. And why is that?
When we break the standards down and we are able to identify what's mastery of a standard and what's a Level 4, or what's a Level 2 or a Level 1, we're looking at that specific standard, and we're not looking at averages. We're not looking at more than one item on a test, we're looking at that specific standard on that test. Or we're looking at the learning progressions toward that standard that don't count towards the grade, final grade, because it is practice, and practice doesn't count toward a final grade.
Okay. We'll come back. Okay. I apologize. Who's next?
Thank you all. We're going to move to two Northera Canyon's teachers, and they are right here with us.
Thank you.
Good evening.
You have to get a little bit very close.
My name is Stacy Pearson. There we go. And I teach at Northera Canyon in 3rd grade. I'm a teacher and a parent, like many of you, of a Deer Valley student. I'm going to speak about why I have changed my mindset from traditional grading to standard-based grading. So in the past, when I used traditional grades, a student might have received a good grade, let's say a 93%. That's great. I would have been very happy, thinking the student did well. However, multiple standards are typically on a test, and an A-minus grade does not show clearly which standards the student has mastered and which they did not. The student would have been happy as well, thinking they were, you know, doing well, nothing really to improve on, maybe need to be a little neater next time. So for example, if I gave a student a writing assessment, I asked them to write an informative essay. I would have graded them on neatness, organizing, and indenting paragraphs. Did they complete it before the due date? If not, minus 5 points, minus 10 points. Did they provide exactly 7 to 10 fully explained details? Today, I'm not grading them on neatness as much as I'd like to, not on timeliness unless the quarter has closed, or whether they met my requirement for the exact number of detailed sentences. Today, they are graded based on the standard. Did they show relevant evidence, not straying off topic? Did they demonstrate a full understanding of the topic, and so forth? Students are clear on these learning targets from the beginning of the learning. This clarity helps students better understand what's expected to achieve mastery. They can more easily meet their learning target if the target is clearly stated. When a student is unsuccessful on any assessment, I can now easily identify their weaknesses, pull them into a focus group where they and others can receive more practice, and be retaught a specific standard. The ability of teachers to see the standards broken down by each student's mastery level easily allows teachers to readdress learning needs. So in my opinion, going back to traditional grading would not put Arizona students at a great, or would put them at a great disadvantage compared to students who, all over the country, who will continue to use the standard-based grading mindset and process. If we don't grade based on standards, then why do we teach based on standards? Going back to traditional grading would be outdated and would not help students meet their full learning potential, in my opinion.
Good evening, President O'Brien, members of the board, and Dr. Finch. My name is Leslie Harris, and I teach 3rd grade Gifted Cluster at Northera Canyon. This year has been different. We were Phase 1 school last year, and honestly, the standards-based mindset was a lot for me to wrap my head around. Having a daughter that graduated IB diploma, I did have somewhat of an understanding of how standard-based grading worked, but I was still uncomfortable about making the change from traditional grading to standard-based grading. I've been in education for 30-plus years. We've always allowed the curriculum to guide our instruction. If it was in the book, we taught it. If it wasn't in the curriculum, whether it be ELA, science, social studies, math, didn't get taught. I've been through many phases of education. Teach phonics, teach whole language, let's use inventive spelling, let's teach them how to spell. Don't worry, they'll learn that in 4th grade, they should have learned that in 2nd grade. There is no perfect world, and as educators, we know that each child learns in different ways and at different speeds. Then along came national and state standards. It was great. Things were getting more organized and spelled out as to what the students will learn in each grade. We weren't there yet. With traditional grading, I may have given a math test on a unit. That unit covered multiplication, division, one-step word problems, two-step word problems, and a few problems on estimating to the nearest 100. Here's Johnny. He got a 90%. And here's Sarah. Maybe? She got a 70%. An A and a C, both are passing grades, so all is good, right? Well, what we don't know is that Johnny, he can multiply and divide. He could do one-step word problems, but he is unable to master a two-step word problem. Sarah can't divide or figure any word problems, but she does know how to estimate. Looking at their percentages, how would we know what they really can or cannot do? Our state adopted standards that must be met at each grade level. Our district created essential academic standards that set the expectation for what students need to know and be able to do in each grade and subject. So with this thought process and implementation, we will assess each standard separately. So I, as a teacher, can give that unit test but score each standard individually. And now Johnny will receive intervention and reteaching on two-step word problems so he can master that standard. Sarah is going to get supports for the standards she is not understanding and applying. And the students that mastered all of the standards, they will receive enrichment and extension lessons. I am thankful to our board and our district for the time we have been allowed to dive into the essential standards. During our full-day PD last month, my team was able to meet with district PLC leaders. I am learning how to create and use meaningful assessments. I'm learning how to utilize rubrics, and I'm learning how to allow my students to independently reflect on their growth toward mastery of each standard. At the end of our full-day PD, we came away with a clear picture of what quarter 2 will look like and how we will use our data to guide our instruction, and what interventions we will need to put in place for our Tier 2 and our Tier 3 students. I am a teacher and a parent of two kids in Deer Valley. One of my kids has challenges and comes with a 30-page IEP. Seeing a 2 on his report card for a standard on reading is not easy as a parent. But what I do know is that he is being taught and exposed to that standard, and with support, he is able to master that particular concept. His IEP goals are now tied to the district's essential standards. This is further evidence to me that his instruction is planned out, is focused, and purposeful. Part of my thinking that is shifting is trusting that his teachers are working on learning progressions and providing my son with targeted supports to allow him to be successful. I fought the mindset of standard-based grading. First quarter was tough. I spent many hours analyzing data and creating common formative assessments. I built student reflections into my assessments. To me, the work has paid off. I am all in. I can now appreciate the mindset of standard-based grading. Some of our in-process assessments do not count toward a final grade, and parents have a hard time understanding this concept. I am committed to painting the picture to parents of what essential standards are and how we use the in-process assignments and assessments to work towards the mastery of essential standards. It's tough to make a shift. It's not comfortable. Change takes work. I don't see how we can go back now. It would be archaic to return to our old way of grading.
Moving on to meaningful grades, which is a good segue. With new Power School grading system in change, there will be some challenges. Each campus should have one or two teacher leaders who help administration train the staff on setting up grade groups at the beginning of the year or with any other issues that arise. What is the definition of a meaningful grade? In-process learning and assessments are the two grades you'll see as a parent. The in-process learning should reflect skills students need to progress toward mastery of a standard. These grades are meant as practice, as well as to drive the instructional interventions for teachers. Practice does not count toward the final grade, but it is incredibly meaningful. Assessments can be tests, quizzes, projects, and they can all assess mastery, and assessments count toward the final grade. Power School is a tool that can tell the story of student learning. The key is the app does not have the same capabilities as computer access. We see the gradebook as a partnership between students, teachers, and parents to check in-process learning, at least weekly. It is a helpful tool to check what skills need to be addressed or how on track their child is to mastering the skills required for the standard. Administrators connect the teacher gradebook to the teacher evaluation system and performance standard for assessment of and for learning. We look to see if gradebooks reflect standard mastery and progress, learning towards the standards, and that it's updated weekly during our formal observations. On the Union Park campus alone, we have 250, at least 256, gradebooks. So if a parent notices that a gradebook is not updated weekly, it's always the best idea to contact the teacher and speak with your child. As Lucas, sitting next to me here, represents, your child might be able to explain their grade pretty well and be his or her own best advocate. and be his or her own best advocate.
Good evening, everyone. I am Lucas Falk, a sixth grader at Union Park School. So as you can see in the top-left corner on that slideshow, I have our class mission statement, which my class created together. And then at the bottom of that page, we have my own personal mission statement, which I created by myself. I have this signed by my teacher and by myself as well. In the bottom quarter, it has my short-term and long-term goals. My short-term goal could be to get good grades, like fours, and being able to show these to other people. And I'd like to complete that by the end of this year. While a long-term goal might be getting into college and one way I could complete that would be getting fours and threes in school. As you can see in the top-right corner, I have my scores for math. And it shows some standards that I have completed in math and how I can complete them to get a higher grade than I currently would have. In the middle and the bottom, I also have a score I got for a test. As you can see, for tests, it has multiple scores while a quiz would only have one. So in a test, there would be multiple standards and more than one while a quiz would only have one standard. So in a test, I have more opportunities to show more standards and how I've learned them. And in a quiz, I might only have one way to show how I've learned one standard. If I don't do well on a test, I can always go to my teacher and I could ask for a retake. So if I don't like my score, let's say I got a two on a test, I know that I can always go to my teacher and ask on my own time to retake a quiz. Then my score, if I do well on my retake, then my score will raise and that will show in the gradebook.
Mrs. Graham, can I ask a question? Lucas, so let's say you got on this Unit Two test, you got two threes, right?
Yes.
So if you wanted to show that you were at mastery and to get a four, what would that process look like between you and your teacher? What would you have to do on your own time to complete that? Would you have a meeting with your teacher to go over maybe what you missed? Or is that something you do on your own? Can you give a little bit more detail?
So normally what we would do is while we're taking the test, we would add an explanation on how we got our answer. And we can show what we did to get that in words and using vocabulary instead of just showing our thought process on paper. We could also write what we've done. And that's to get a four.
So you have to, if the standard is to do the work, and I'm going to do addition because that'd be easy, right? If I can show that I can add and I get that right, why is the explanation of how I got what I got necessary in order to get a four?
So then I can also show that I know vocabulary and I can also show a deeper depth of knowledge.
Okay. Thank you, Lucas. This one's for Mrs. Graham or whoever else wants to answer it. If the standard is addition and I've answered, I don't know how many problems might be on the test that show I know four plus four, five plus six. If we need to, if we're going to test vocabulary, wouldn't that be a different standard? Or skill related to that standard?
President O'Brien, members of the board, Dr. Finch. When we write our rubrics, we look at what the state expects for what is proficient and what is highly proficient, what is partially proficient. And when we look at those rubrics and the standards that they have, we look at generally a change of verb. So in order to be proficient, that's the standard. So if they meet the standard, that is proficiency, which is a three. We change the verb and move it to a higher depth of knowledge. That would be differentiating in the instruction and the assessment for students who need to be challenged a little bit more to be able to get a four.
So and in our current, I'll save that one for later. Okay, thank you.
I just have a short question. So you want to get, you've got a two and you want something, you want to earn something higher because you want to learn more. Are there criteria that you've got to meet before you can do the retake?
So there's not much that I would have to do in order to get the retake other than asking my teacher myself. But some things I could do are to be, make sure I go over my learning progressions to make sure I understand that standard.
Good. And Mrs. Graham, so part of what we've heard is that retake, retake, retake. So is there, for you, is there something in the teachers' minds that they have explained during their instruction that if you want to do a retake, you should, you need to blank? I see heads over here shaking, so whoever.
All right, hopefully it makes it work. Okay. President O'Brien, members of the board, Dr. Finch. What we do is we look at the rubric, which is very helpful because that helps us pull small groups. So some students might not understand the skill at all. So we start on step one for the learning progressions. If some students are on a two for their rubric and we would look at which part of the two that they need or that they understand before we can move on to a three level. So it helps us identify their misconceptions and exactly what they need in order to go on to the next level of the rubric. So if they are at a two, let's say it's identifying multiple main ideas and summarizing, and they can only identify main ideas but not summarize, we know where we need to, what we need to start with and where we need to take them instead of starting from step one.
President O'Brien, I'm going to ask Kathy just to give a little more clarity on the question that you asked.
President O'Brien and members of the board and guests, when we're talking about the rubrics or reassessment or retakes, it does depend on what the standard is. And I know our student here was very eloquent in talking about his specific test here. And then that rubric and that standard required a higher level of knowledge of the academic language and the processes and that he was required to explain or understand or show that understanding of that process. So different standards and different rubrics require different performances of the students. So if a student does do a reassessment or retake or a re-performance, they are required to perform what that rubric requires of that. Sorry. I'm not sure if you got all of that.
We did, I think. Just to the very end. But to Mrs. Ordway's question and one of my very distinct concerns when we've discussed this before has been, and Mrs. Graham touched on it a little bit, is practice. And when she talked about her own child who maybe doesn't want to do their practice in the normal course of learning and waits till later. And this was a concern of mine with this process is that you could not ever practice or not ever study and take the test over and over. And if I'm incorrect, Mrs. Ordway, maybe that was, I think, what you were trying to get at is what's the process? If I'm in my class and I don't do any of my homework and I don't do well on my test because I've not practiced, do I just get to come in the next day and retake my test or the week after? What compels a child to actually do the learning? Because it's not taking a test over and over.
If I may step in. Sorry.
Just say your name and what school you go to and what grade you're in.
So good evening, President O'Brien, members of the board and Dr. Finch. My name is Brendan Salisbury and I am a junior in the IB program at Barry Goldwater. In response to your question, most commonly, what takes place and what I've seen across the board at several schools to your point is that within the unit that's being assessed, you have to have all of your progress formative assessments done before you can retake that summative assessment to prove that you've done the work to be able to pass that then summative assessment. Because to your point, there would be no point in having the students wait until the test and then take it over and over again because that's a test of test-taking skills rather than the knowledge itself. But putting the roadblock and saying you have to have all of your formative assessments turned in provides an opportunity for the students to then master or at least provide some level of proficiency on those assessments before then retaking the summative assessment. And that is also what happens at Barry Goldwater.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Lucas. You did a great job. Appreciate it.
CJ.
Hello. My name is CJ Stevenson. I'm a senior at San Diego O'Connor High School. I'm involved in student government and Academy of American Studies. And when I think of standard-based learning, I have a lot of comments on it based on what I've heard students at O'Connor like. Students, sorry. Students like an overall understanding of a topic and a higher understanding of topic and frequent assessments of mastery. So in one of my classes, we're able to, well, before we even take a quiz, we need to have all our notes done and our teacher texts our notes. And then all of our quizzes enable to take the test. We need to have, we need to be passing at least a 70% before we can even retake a quiz. So I think that shows understanding of the topic or mastery of the assignment. And us at O'Connor, we have a motto, "Expect the best, be the best, and get the best." And I want whatever system that can help me improve my skills as I graduate from DVUSD and help me grow as a person and not just academically but socially and as a person going into society. And whatever teacher can turn my weaknesses into strengths, I would appreciate whatever system they're able to use. And students want to improve the grade conversion system between the two systems. A lot of students don't understand what's, how it's translated throughout the years. And to make all assessments able for retakes, because some assessments are not able for retakes. And students want to know what they're going to be mastering before the unit starts. So maybe like a preview lesson before we actually dive into the whole thing.
Thank you, CJ.
All right. President O'Brien, members of the board and Dr. Finch, once again, my name is Brendan Salisbury and I am a junior in the IB diploma program at BJHS. So I would like to provide a brief explanation more in depth of why I'm a strong advocate for standards-based grading and what could be done to improve its standings in the district. So to provide a little background, I am an honor student and have been since elementary. I got to be very good at the game of school. Make sure all your work is turned in on time and get as much bonus credit as possible. I once achieved 104% in a subject which I thoroughly think should be possible. You were lazy if you had a low 90% score and heaven forbid you got a B. Grades could be decided by whether or not you took a Kleenex box at the end of the year for a grade bump. I don't think these percentages can accurately depict the amount the student has retained and more importantly, is able to apply in their. Every grade should be connected to a standard to reflect the quality of learning, not the quantitatively decided difference between an A or a B because the student forgot the assignment or was only able to complete some of it. I've been very blessed in my three years in the IB program with almost all of my teachers having tenure of over 10 years and extreme familiarity with the of standard-based grading. However, not every student has this privilege with the impacts of COVID and short. I believe this is a component of the main issue because when we have substitutes and brand-new teachers, they are most likely not going to be familiar with standards-based grading and possibly even the subject they've been assigned to. In my classes, we are graded purely based on the standard given to the teacher. So for example, if I was to cover a subject in my calculus class, I could demonstrate my proficiency in a variety of ways. One of the most recent ways I chose to participate was in math court in which I and other students were given court cases based on the calculus concepts given to us and we had to either defend or prosecute the suspect with empirical evidence backing us up. This was for a test grade and showed my teacher far more than any multiple-choice test would that I understood the concept. There is no extra credit, but there are always redos so long as all formative work for that unit is. Once again, this clause is to prevent students from taking a test several times without having done the work to prove their understanding on a summative assessment. Furthermore, in the IB program, the IB coordinators and teachers work hand-in-hand to provide handouts and newsletters for parents detailing how standards-based grading works. They also provide informational Q&amp;A sessions to eliminate any lingering questions or clarifications that are needed. Understanding from the parents of the standard-based grading system is a crucial component to its integration and will be more streamlined if practices like these are replicated at other schools. I think that if the district were to have more in-depth training, teaching all staff about standards-based grading, clarifying that it is not only a shift in the system but in mindset as well, the results would be absolutely phenomenal. In addition, the teachers need a platform to grade on that is made for standards-based grading. Power Teacher Pro averages all grades and teachers cannot fully make the shift if the software they use does not work with the grading system that they use. As the child of a current educator, I know that when teachers feel prepared and have clarity about what they need to do to prepare their students to perform well in their class, their job is far easier and more enjoyable. In summary, I believe that standards-based grading is an effective system that can be very beneficial in our district if implemented correctly.
Thank you very much, Brendan.
We are going to shift now our folks. So if you'll give us just a quick moment to do seat changes.
CJ and Brendan, thank you guys so much. Thank you also for presenting.
While these folks are setting up, if I could have a show of hands from our folks here on the right who came to share with the governing board tonight, could you raise your hand if you're wanting to share? Two, three, four, five, six. You sit up here, Mrs. Fisher. Okay, thank you. You're still going to get to share. Okay.
Thank you. I think we're settled.
Go ahead.
We're going to talk just quickly about grade scales and the changes that the board gave us with grade scales. In talking with our Phase One and Phase Two principals, all of our schools, 16, have implemented the changes in the grade scales. And you see there that the changes that were made. The challenges that have been identified is that our Phase One specifically, Phase Two because they were beginning to prepare last year, have struggled with the different messaging about what does a letter and a number mean. In the four-to-one or the four-to-zero scale, the schools have found that their stakeholders, their parents, their students, and their teachers had a better understanding of how they were using rubrics to score progressions and standards than with the change in the scales. But they have made those shifts and those changes. Our K-8 schools specifically identified that they have two scales that they're working at. The four-one at K-six and the A-through-F, the 100-through-60 scale at 712. So for them, it would be 78. And then as you've heard a couple of the folks mention here, averaging just does not fit with a standards-based mindset and evidence-based grading in that practice is practice and doesn't factor into a final grade as it's practice and students getting better at the skills that they're learning.
Is practice formative work, Dr. Gallagher?
Practice is formative work. We consider it in-process learning.
Thank you.
We're going to shift now and Dr. Smith and I are going to talk a little bit about first-quarter data for our K-8 schools and mid-semester data for our high schools, the two high schools.
Good evening, President O'Brien, governing board. Let me explain these charts first real quick. I broke these grades up into grade bands, so K-two, three, six, seven, eight, and nine, 12, simply because they have different grades. they have different grades in those different grade bands. For example, in K2, the vast majority of traditional grades are ES, NS, and U's, but they do also have some courses that are ABs and Cs or would have been 1 through 4 for the Phase 1 schools. So what you see here are three charts, a chart for quarter-one grades for the Phase 1 schools, for the Phase 2 schools, and then a third chart at the bottom for Phase 3 schools. And for each of those, you see four years of first-quarter grades. So you can see the blue being 2020 all the way through this year, fiscal year '23, the gold or yellowish bar. And you see, I've also noted on there, the gray bar, the 2022, was when Phase 1 schools went to a 1:4 grading system. And then we went back to still using a standard-based mindset, but in the grade book putting A, B, C, and D in fiscal year '23. So what you can see here is, especially if you look at the, the distribution for Phase 1 versus Phase 2 versus Phase 3 schools, they kind of came back together when we went back to the, the A through F, but using still a standard-based mindset to get there. So that, go ahead.
So if you look across the distribution of E for A, S 3B, what you'll see is, the gray bar was the 2122 school year. The yellow bar is this year with the, with the change that, that was made with the scale. And if you compare that yellow bar, the 72% for Phase 1, the 61% for Phase 2, and the 74%, I believe it is, for Phase 3, as Scott said, the, the numbers, the balance has come back to what I believe the board was indicating was needed. 3, 6, Scott?
Very similar for grades 3 through 6. You'll see the reason I broke them apart separately, because the vast majority of their grades are A through F on the traditional system. Again, you can see in fiscal year '22, the gray bar, when Phase 1 schools moved to standard-based mindset grades, the 1:4 grade scale, and then back to the A through F in fiscal year '22. Very similar type of, of distribution at the end of the day with the fiscal year '22, the gold bars, the 71 versus the 58 versus the 71% in the A bracket or the E4 and A bracket, and then 19, 21, 18 in the S3B bracket.
Okay, middle school?
Middle school grades, and the reason I separate them out is because then we get into specifically the potential 0 through 4 when we go to the standard-based mindset. So exact same types of graphs, four years, with the gold bar being back to the letter grades using a standard-based mindset. And it's very similar in my mind, the result, 48 versus 50 versus 56%. As now, all schools in any phase would have been As in the fiscal year '23 first-quarter grades.
And then high school?
Finally, high school is kind of tricky. This, these are really semester-one grades for fiscal year '20, '21, and '22, and they're mid-semester grades for fiscal year '23. I can't go back and get a mid-semester grade from previous years, because the way I get the grades from previous years are from stored grades, and they're stored at the end of the semester. I can go look at the grade book now and say, what's your grade right now for, for a high school? So, and, so this was pretty close. It was actually about a week before the end of the first quarter where I pulled these grades. And then you see the very similar types of graphs. Again, there are no Phase 2 schools and high schools, so I'm just showing Phase 1 versus Phase 3. And you can see Phase 1 schools had a 50%, As 26%, Bs, while Phase 3 had 45, 24. You do see a little, in my opinion, a, a smaller amount of the Ds and Fs still in those Phase 1 schools than you see in the Phase 3 schools. And you also notice in the gray bars fiscal year '22, and we talked about this last year already, but there was somewhat of a compression towards the middle with the, with the 1 through or 0 through 4 grades. And that's gone away, I think, with the A through F grades.
We have two parents who are here to chat with us as well. Amanda, if we could send the microphone down, thank you.
I'm Amanda. My daughter is in 7th grade at Union Park. She is doing amazing. She is a girl that you could, she lied at the room, but she's really quiet. She struggled in school up until about 5th grade. And when I say struggled, she hated school, just hated it. She didn't do good. We finally got her an IEP, and she still kind of struggled. And then with switching to the new grading system, and she knows as she gets her grades done and everything turned in, you know, with the help, that she can constantly keep going and trying to get that grade that she wants. This year, she in particularly tested with her RI scores in the beginning of the year at 640, and in October, she had an 8, 840, so a really big leap. So she was able to get out of her reading class. She doesn't just have twos, she has As and Bs, and for one of the first time ever, has straight As. She looks up to her older sister who's in high school, and she's an honor student. So to struggle, it's hard for her. But with this new grading system, she's able to be just like her, and it boosts her attitude, her confidence. It's really benefited her in everything, life at home, just her, and her overall attitude. To get to where she needs to be and to get to her goal, she knows exactly, you know, what she needs to do. I need to make sure all my grades are in, all my work's done, and everything. She, one, last week particularly took the day off. She was exhausted, and I said, well, what are you going to do today? She opened up her Chromebook, sat there, and looked at everything she needed to do. Okay, I need to do this assignment. I need to talk to this teacher and figure out what I can do. And I was just blown away. Like, she didn't just sit and do whatever, she wanted to figure out what she needed to do to get her grades that were lower back up.
Thank you very much. Tiffany?
Good evening, President O'Brien, members of the board, Dr. Finch. My name is Tiffany Ellis. I am a parent of sophomore. She's not a junior quite yet, but she's a sophomore at O'Connor High School. I also teach at O'Connor High School as well. But I'm speaking here tonight as a parent, and I actually just pulled up my daughter's grades in Power Schools. And she currently, historically, she's always been an A student. She comes from the Peoria School District, as we live in those boundaries, and she has always been an A student and continues to be so. She's in advanced placement classes and all honors classes, and she has maintained As all this time. If you were to talk to her, she now can discuss the skills that she needs to work on. She's very aware of her grades, but even more so now under standards-based, she communicates to me the skills that she needs to work on versus I just have a 91%. So, for example, I pulled up her grades tonight on Power Schools, and currently, she has 89% in Honors Chem. So when I pull up that grade, unfortunately, the Power Schools app is a little bit behind when you want to look at the specific standards under a grade. So as a parent and as a teacher, that's actually a criticism that my students have as well, is that the Power Schools app does not communicate effectively the specific standards. So both my daughter, myself, and my students have to use the web-based Power Schools in order to see the specific standards that students are working, working on, excuse me. So when I pull up her grades for chemistry, when I look at them, the most recent ones that were entered for her teacher, her standard that she currently needs to work on is collect, analyze, and interpret data regarding the change in motion of an object or system in one dimension to construct an explanation using Newton's laws. I have no idea what that means, as I teach APUS history and not chemistry, but she does. So she knows exactly what she needs to work on. She has submitted her in-progress learning, and she also scored a C and a B on the two in-progress learning practices that she has. So as a parent, that tells me that she needs some extra help in that particular standard. So while we've been sitting here tonight, I texted her at home, she is sick at home with the flu currently, but when she returns, she knows that she needs to go to Talentime to Mr. Burton's class on Thursday and get extra assistance in that particular standard. Obviously, the two in-progress learning assignments that they did in class, she obviously did not get, she met proficiency on one, but she's below proficiency on the other. So that tells both her and Mr. Burton that she needs to continue practice in that particular standard. And other ones that I've looked at for vectors and forces of motion and gas laws, she has done well in, but I definitely know in this particular standard, she is continuing to struggle. So I know that she knows, and she knows that she needs to go speak with Mr. Burton and get more work on this particular standard. This is not something that I would have been able to tell you last year in biology, because last year in biology, she had, I think, a 93%, but what does that mean, right? I had no idea what she needed to help on. I could have signed up as a parent on Canvas to go see what work she has to do in Canvas, but honestly, I don't have the time to kind of micromanage her grades like that. But when I look at this, I can specifically see what standard she needs to work on, and she and I can have a conversation about what in-progress assignment she's done and what she feels she needs to work on when she goes to Talentime at school this Thursday when she returns. And that is probably one of the biggest things I've had as a parent since August, since this has started, where I am able to specifically identify where she needs to work. She can specifically identify where she needs to work. And then, of course, now she has a concrete path of how to improve in that particular area. This is something that she has not been able to do in the old traditional style of grading, which I'm very pleased that she is able to even talk about what she's learning with this, because it doesn't, you know, it's been about 28 years since I took chemistry. So it's been a long time. The other piece I want to say is, as a parent, in the old style of grading, like I said, I didn't really know what was being taught in class without talking to my daughter specifically and asking specific questions. And I know that teachers and schools should be teaching the standards by law. They are supposed to teach the standards. But I never truly had any solid evidence that that was occurring until I actually see it in the grade book. And as a parent, that's a potential legal issue, I think. If, you know, if I start to question my child's grades, how do I know that those standards have been taught specifically in class? For, for sure now, I know, because they are all listed here, and I can see specifically the standards that by law, she is supposed to be able to show proficiency and, and hopefully master.
Thank you very much.
Tate?
Good evening, my name is Tate Moline. I teach ELA 34 at Barry Goldwater High School, and I'm also the collaborative team lead for the 34 team. And I was fortunate enough to have two release days with the CT leads of the high schools, where we were able to come together and look at our standards and unwrap them. And we say that a lot, we unwrap the standards, but what does that really mean? Well, the standards are chunky. When you look at our state standards, there's a lot to them, and that's really, I think, what drives a lot of confusion for parents, teachers, students, is exactly what does this standard mean? So by breaking down the standard into progressions, into smaller pieces, into actual skills that are required in order to show proficiency for the standard, everyone is able to be clear about exactly what is necessary in order to be learning and to provide that proficiency. So the teachers came together, and it was a lot of discussion, some arguing, but eventually we were able to kind of come to an agreement of exactly what this standard meant and how we needed to break it down for students into progressions, into smaller skill sets. And this is, I think, the consistency that we've needed at the high school level, where we are all understanding the same thing and teaching the same progressions and the same skills, and that we're able to communicate that with the students. And I really think this last point here on this slide captures how beneficial this was. When, when we're talking about what does an A mean, or what does a 4 mean, what does a 3 mean, what does a B mean, what's proficiency, by creating rubrics that can go into Canvas that are short and small and easily digestible, it's much clearer and consistent for everyone involved exactly what is being looked at, what is being taught, and what is being learned. And without that collective efficacy happening across all the high schools, everyone's kind of on their own. And so this was a wonderful time for all the high school teachers to get together and really join forces to make this standard-based grading as strong as we possibly can.
Thank you very much. Dr. Gallagher, we have at least six members of the public here to speak, and I know that we have two governing board members who have not spoken, and we have a hard close at 8:30.
Okay? We'll be quick. Kathleen?
I will, I will definitely be fast. Okay, so my name is Kathleen Giacini. I am the counselor at Sandro Day O'Connor High School. And the reason I would like to speak to you tonight is because I feel like there potentially has been some misunderstandings about students being awarded scholarships or having college and other opportunities, and somehow these may be hampered by standards-based grading. But in fact, we've really seen the opposite. And of course, when this all came around, you know, I know a lot of parents were concerned about the number grades and how that would be perceived, but when we talked to our local universities, all of them said, like, there's no issue with that whatsoever. They get transcripts from around the world, and so they get all kinds of different types of grades, and they're very able to read them and understand them, and we didn't really have anybody even ask us any questions as transcripts were being submitted for students. And so, of course, that's in-state, but what we found this year is that we had an even larger number of our students applying and going out of state, including, you can see up there, some very prestigious top-tier schools this year without any issues whatsoever. So another issue, of course, is, well, are they earning scholarships? Because I know that that was definitely a parental concern, and we can all understand that we'd want our kids to get the most money possible. And when we looked at that, we were actually kind of shocked at how much more scholarship money they earned last year. It's been the biggest jump we've ever had, and I've been at O'Connor, I don't know, 17 years, and, you know, we may go up a million or so a year, and we went up $6 million in scholarships last year, so it was a huge increase for sure. And so that was in spite of our state universities, which is actually a national trend. Our universities are actually lowering their scholarship dollars or making it harder to achieve their best scholarships. So not only did they earn more money, they were getting less money per scholarship. For example, that would have been the very first year that ASU reduced their top scholarship from $10,000 a year to $8,000 a year. So the, the universities are reducing. NAU increased their GPA for that top scholarship, so it went from 3.5 to 3.75. Those are probably the two most popular schools that our students go to, and yet we still had higher scholarship earnings than ever. So to us, you know, it does not at all seem that this is harming students and their abilities. In fact, it seems to have gone the opposite way.
Thank you, Kathleen. Now, the next slide just gives you, as board members, the last three years of scholarship offerings per high school. And as Kathleen mentioned, O'Connor's increase in offerings was about $6,700,000. And as Kathleen mentioned, O'Connor's increase in offerings was about $6,700,000 more than the previous year. The next school that had a similar was Mountain Ridge at $3 million, just about $3,300,000 more. We have one of our teachers, two of our teachers. Let's see that. I think this is one, and that would be Alicia. Alicia, rather than clicking on each of those links, would you just mind talking to them quickly?
Yep.
Thank you.
So President O'Brien, members of the board, and Dr. Finch.
I don't think your mic is on or close enough.
Is that better?
Better.
My name is Alicia Johnson, and I am a second-grade teacher at Union Park. And so one of the ways that we kind of divide the behaviors from the actual grades themselves is we utilize what's called Torah time. And so Torah time is a before-after-school opportunity that we offer to students that can be assigned by the teacher. And in some cases, they will come and ask for that extra time. And so in order to determine whether or not a student needs that, we follow a flow chart. And the big question is, are they choosing to not complete the work, or is it because they're not understanding it? And so if they are not understanding the work, that's where a PLC process is coming to play. But if they are choosing to not do the work, then we move on to Torah time. And we take that opportunity to assign this after-school time. And so during that time, they are required to come into a classroom, and there's a supervising teacher that has already taken the time to look at the information and the assignments that need to be done. And so after the teacher has looked at what those students need to work on, the student comes in, and the teacher is there to assist as needed, or just simply give them the extra time to complete the work in a quiet setting. And so we make sure that parents are informed, and they give their consent through the assignment form that we give that kind of lists the assignments that need to be done and what skills need to be worked on by. And one major benefit for our middle school students is that it helps with sports eligibility. So by giving them this time, they are able to take a little bit of their practice out to make sure that they have their assignments done.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott and Robin will talk quickly about how academic behaviors are addressed at the high school level.
Absolutely. One of the, first of all, my name's Scott Me. It's nice to see you all again. I teach at Sandro Day O'Connor High School. This is my 22nd year of teaching. Teach world history.
Please make sure you talk closer to the microphone. Thank you.
My apologies. And as I was listening to all of our other guest speakers tonight, it really lined up with what I was saying, beauty of standard-based mindset, in that transparency, having all stakeholders, teachers, parents, students, understand exactly what's being taught. Being, as an educator, being able to narrow that down and offer help specifically where needed in a much faster capacity. Also, having students doing more self-evaluation and less memorization has been a major benefit to what I've seen. But really, that consistency across all of my colleagues' classrooms and students understanding that common language, that they can, you know, continue to get extra help to continue to master those skills, has been wonderful. I am also a parent in the district, and my daughter does not go to a school where they have, currently have standard-based mindset. And we play a lot of guessing games as to what the policies, rules, procedures, makeup policies are for her classroom. And I wish she could benefit from that. So I think to sum this up quickly, I'm going to pass this over to Mrs. Naylor.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Robin Naylor, and I teach Spanish at O'Connor, and I've been with O'Connor the past 19 years. And I personally really believe that shifting to a standards-based mindset is one of the most positive changes we've made, and it's one of the most student-centered changes that we've made. I'm here to speak a little bit about separating academic behaviors from grades, which I drank the Kool-Aid, I truly believe is a positive change for our students, and I'll tell you why. And it alludes to some of the concerns I think you guys mentioned before. We have students whose academic behaviors are essential to their success. We have students who need to do all the practices and turn in everything and turn in on time and come to Talentime and come to tutoring in order to be successful. And talking about those behaviors kind of enables those students to see the correlation between their behaviors and their academic success. We have some students that don't need to do as much practice. Every student learns differently and at a different pace. And having students that are able to be successful without doing every single practice is a benefit for students. Being able to separate behaviors from some students that are successful and maybe not behaving in ways that are conducive to a learning environment, that's another great conversation. And I think being able to have those conversations about academic behaviors apart from grades is a huge way to grow our students into productive young adults. Discussing the importance of turning in work on time, even if your grade is a good grading class, that's an important conversation to have that benefits our students, not only in the classroom, but in whatever they decide to do outside of classroom. So I know we're told to be brief. I had a lot more to share with you guys. But separating academic behaviors from grades, I think, only benefits our students, and it gives them more insight into what kind of learner they are and what kind of skills they need to be successful in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Naylor. So Dr. Halligan, right, so I'm on page four. What I would like to do is let the folks who are here to speak, so that if we have to have section four presented at a governing board meeting, no, you're shaking your head, no.
President O'Brien, we will submit section four in this Friday's update, so you'll have that information. We do have one more group of teachers to share, but we'll do that after public speaking.
Okay, that would be wonderful. So, but I don't want anybody to get up yet, because I'm going to go to Mrs. Fisher for questions unless you'd like to hear from the public first. Mrs. Fisher?
I would like to request we have a study session at some point. This is a wonderful presentation. There's no study. You know, we have a conversation about, about why we can't do it in a test. And the reality is, when you say, well, we can't do the standards, all in all, just one test, we can't tell. Well, absolutely, you can. Example, I'm going to give you a math test. In that math test, it is going to have first-grade work, second-grade work, third-grade work. It's going to have those standards. I'm not going to give you adding and subtraction all the way up to calculus in one test, so that it is so convoluted that I can't.
Sorry, we need you to talk closer to your microphone.
It absolutely can be done that way. It has been done that way for centuries. You know, kids, kids learn in stages. And so what I'm hearing, and I'm sorry if I'm maybe misunderstanding, I'm hearing that our students are highly versed in how to discuss standards-based grading. I'm not so sure if they can actually add, subtract, divide, multiply. I know the top-tier children absolutely can, but I don't know that the others can. I know that I have a lot of information that's been provided by teachers who, who talk about the fact that standards-based grading actually does skew the outcomes, so that kids who are not actually proficient and not actually doing their work will still get a passing and proficient grade. Some of it is also the system. The system drops off the decimal points, which, you drop off a .3, not significant. Drop off a .4, not significant. Drop it off consistently through the year, very significant. So there is a lot of stuff here that we actually need to study and actually discuss with our community and our teachers. And, and we have been listening to a very long, very well-thought-out and well-presented presentation. And so I would request that we actually have a study session and ask questions.
Okay. From our audience, our community members who would like to speak, if you would like to come over to the chair over here in our corner where there's a microphone, I would invite you to come over and state your name for the record. We do want to make sure. I thought I counted six, but we had some going up and down. I wasn't sure. Please come on in over here to the table. Thank you. If, if those of you would like to sit in the reserved seats while you wait, you could go ahead, Mrs. Lundee, that first, right there where the microphone is, we're going to, you sit there, you get to speak. When you're done, we'll switch out. I just need you to state your name and what your role is, if you're a parent and if you have students at a school, if you could identify the school, that would be lovely. Or if you're a community member or a teacher, staff member, that would be helpful.
Is it on?
Good evening. My name is Cindy Lundee. I am a teacher at Stetson Hills, and I am a parent of two students at Sandro Day O'Connor High School and one student at Hillcrest Middle School. I've spoken out about this before, and I, although I appreciate everybody who spoke here tonight, I still have many questions and concerns about standards-based grading.
Please bring it closer to your mouth. Sorry. Thank you.
I want to explain to you a little bit about what's going on at Stetson Hills right now. At Stetson Hills, we now have 99% assessment grades versus 1% in-process grades. And I understand the, the purpose of all of that, but I want to let you all know that in our power schools, we can automatically have the input of the 4-3-2-1. So if I input a percentage grade, it will automatically put the standard in. And here's how it goes. 88 to 100 is a four. Now, 63 to 87 is a three. 38 to 62 is a two. And 37 and below is a one. Now, at Stetson Hills, we're not allowed to enter any grade below a 50. So the one is moot. And if you give a student a three, if he earns a 67 on a test, which is traditionally a D, you're saying that that's equivalent to an 86 or an 87, which is also a three. Next year, from my understanding and what our training is, we're taking out the letter grades, and so the students are just going to be given a 4-3-2-1. So in essence, you're saying that 100%, a student who scores 100% on a test is equivalent to a student who scores an 88% on a test. Student who scores an 87% on a test is equivalent to someone who scores a 68. In my view, they are not even close to being similar. I have, and I'm kind of going to be all over the place, because I've gotten so many stories from different people. So that's, that's the story at Stetson. At, I also have a friend at a community college who's, whose child goes there, is graduate of Sandro Day O'Connor High School. And in one of the classes, the other students from Sandro Day O'Connor High School have asked the college professor if they could have a retake on their exam. Of course, in college, you don't get retakes on exams. But what we're teaching these kids is that if they don't do it right the first time, they can get another chance and another chance and another chance. In the real world, it doesn't work that way. Our motto is graduating lifelong learners who would successfully compete, lead, and positively impact the world. Well, if you're teaching the student in high school that you can redo something that you do wrong continuously, time and time again, and then they get to college and reality hits them, that you don't get to live that way. That's not how life works. So that's, that's concerning as well. Now, with my own students in high school, back in the 2021 school year, as you all know, we were told that a four was almost impossible to attain. We've, we were all told that. You had to explain, like Ms. O'Brien brought up, President O'Brien brought up, if you add, you can either, you can add. If you explain it, then you get the four. Well, that's how it was at O'Connor. My, my, my kids were told by many of their teachers that there's no way that they're going to get a four. Well, once the community did not buy into that, now the rules have changed. Now, they can't, now that they're back to the A, B, C, D, F, but kind of 4-3-2-1, it's still really confusing, they, they can get a four a little bit easier. And, and now the grades would be different. So my point is, is that if the exact same student did the exact same work in 2021 as they did today, in 2020 and 21, they would get a three, because it's impossible to get a four, now they would get an A, whereas before they couldn't. So do you see where the, it's skewed there? The grade point average for those kids a couple of years ago was messed up, right? So, so that, that's a concern as well. I know there's a lot of other people that want to speak, so I will yield my time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for coming. Next.
Hi, my name is Kendra Mint. I didn't plan anything to speak tonight, because I thought it was going to be like a question-and-answer sort of setup. I've been coming to the board meetings about SBG for months and months and months. My two daughters, one attended Sandro Day O'Connor last year. She's a senior. She's now up at NAU. And I have another senior there this year. Last year was a complete cluster at Sandro Day O'Connor High School. Nobody knew what was going on between the principal, the teachers, straight down to the kids. Nobody could get a straight answer. Not one. Today, the principal at O'Connor still cannot explain this grading process to a parent. Very few teachers can. I appreciate the fact, the mothers sitting over there have had great experiences with their children. However, on the opposite side, both of my daughters have been negatively affected by standard-based grading. One emotionally, one just completely giving up on themselves, because they didn't know what to do at points. Both of my kids have always been A, B students. Last year was the first year my kids were failing classes. Failing. And it's heartbreaking to see your kids come home when they are giving their best after two crazy years of COVID and not know what to do at school anymore. You call teachers, you call the principal, you call the district, you get in touch with your board members, you bring it to attention. Nothing ever gets resolved. We're applying two years in a row for colleges, and yes, there is a huge difference when you're, when that student's GPA drops from a 3.5 to a 3.0, they are no longer accepted for any scholarship, in-state, out-of-state, anywhere. I've been doing this for two years, applying for colleges, and not all kids go to in-state. Laws change. Certain kids become ineligible because of financial situations and whatnot. When your kid has basically maintained at least a 3.5 and above, and they can't get a scholarship anymore because they got a two on their report card, which transfers to a C, is complete lunacy. Complete lunacy. And I, I, I cannot wrap my hand, all the explanations tonight from, from the teachers, from the district, it was for, for elementary kids. But this system doesn't work in high school. If you don't have a community of, of teachers that all agree, and that all can communicate and communicate clearly to parents and, and kids, how this process is supposed to work, it will never, ever, ever work. Because the kids go from class to class to class, and they get told different rules, different expectations. They can retake a test, they can't retake a test, and their GPAs just continue to drop, and they come home thinking they can't do anything. They can't do anything right. They don't want to go to school anymore, because their teachers are now treating them like crap. I can't get answers from anybody. And their teachers are frustrated, because they can't get answers, and half of them are too afraid to come here and sit and tell you all, this doesn't make any sense. They don't like it. There's teachers here tonight that don't agree with SBG, that spoke, because they were asked to. I know that. So if anybody wants to admit to that, spell it out, because we know you're here. Anyhow, I sent the board probably 30 pages of information. I have printouts of my daughter's, my senior's power school. You can look at it yourselves. It doesn't make any sense. There's grades, there's no grades, there's, these aren't even updated for weeks at a time. So I don't know how I'm supposed to see learning progress, when I don't see grades for weeks and weeks and weeks. I have, what are we, almost half, we're what, more than halfway through the first semester of high school? There's like three, four grades in, in classes? So I'm looking at maybe six grades total that are going to, that are going to calculate into my daughter's dual enrollment ELA class? That's a college course. Four to six grades are going total per coursework? That doesn't make sense to me. Never has, never will. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Darlene Pope Turner. I'm a teacher and a parent. I'm glad my daughter's graduated. She went to three schools in Deer Valley Unified School District. I've spoken at this meeting, I think, two or three times before about SBG, how I feel about it. about it. I guess I'm one of the brave ones because all I hear from the teachers I work with is they don't want it. It's going to be so much work on an already stressed-out staff, creating rubrics for every little thing, extra training, it's just going to be overwhelming. And when you have, I teach one subject, I teach fifth grade history, and there are many, many standards. Now, I wasn't a teacher all my life. I was in the corporate world for 22 years. I got my master's in education when I was 46, and I had excellent training at ASU. In fact, if anyone was trained under the TAP program, it was excellent, excellent teaching. And I'm frankly dumbfounded when I hear teachers that are just learning how to teach through this. I start out every single lesson with my learning objective, standard, numbered, what the students are doing to master that goal. We read it before we begin, it's posted on my wall, and we read it when we're done, and we do a check to make sure that we've learned that standard. That's just good teaching practice. So maybe we just need some mediation, training for some teachers that just are not sure how to teach the standards. And then when I hear that I taught what was in the book and it wasn't a standard, that too, we don't do that. I have a book, and there's very few things I can teach in it because I go by the standards that the district gave me, which are on the back of the report card. We rate ones, twos, threes, and fours for every standard. When I put a grade in, as Mrs. Lundie said, I pull up the standards that apply, and I give them a one, they need help and they do not master it, even with help, a two, they can do fifth grade work with some help, a three, they do fine independently, or a four, they pretty much can teach it to the class. So all the standards are there, it's perfectly clear. Our team sends out a newsletter each week. It's so simple with everything the students are learning, what's due and what to expect. This stuff, to me, I mean, it's as clear as mud. And I'm not the only one. I hear teachers talking. I've heard you guys get the texts and the emails from teachers. They're afraid to sit here. And like, this was very orchestrated and rehearsed, okay? But I hear what's going on. And here's just one more thing, this is making students lazy, okay? Soon as you talk about retakes, and Mrs. Lundie says it's not the real world, okay? We do work every day because you learn by doing, as I learned in school. 90% of our learning is doing, so we do something. So, if the students are always asking, is this for a grade? Is this for a grade? And if they knew it's for 1% or 0%, they will do slop. Children are lazy, and most of them will take the easy way out, and they'll write a sloppy sentence. But soon as I say, yes, this is going in the gradebook, oh, I get a whole paragraph. So they quickly master the standards because it counts toward the grade and they want to earn it. You're taking that away from me. I can't get them to do the work unless it counts toward a grade. It's horrible. And then the retakes, before they take a test, they're asking, could I retake this? Before they take it. Which showed they didn't study? So we're having to jump through hoops, saying, well, you know, I'm not giving the same test twice because I saw students writing the numbers they got wrong on their hands so they can do their retake. And so the teachers are having to create different tests. How much work do you think that is? I not only create the first assessment, I'm creating a second and a third, or even a fourth. Instead of getting it right the first time, and last year when I taught science, I told them, no, there's one take, get it right the first time, my grades were great. They studied so hard. They were studying with partners, independently with parents. So you're taking that away from me as a teacher, to get them motivated to do it right the first time. You know, I was in advertising, and I had to do things right the first time. If I had a report due at 9:00 AM, there was no redos. You'd be fired. Let's get real. I mean, and a simple Google search, and this is just so bad. Arizona, well, the top schools in the nation, you guys probably know, New Jersey, Massachusetts, Florida, Washington, and Colorado. New Jersey, number one school, doesn't use standard-based grading. Maybe we should look at what they're doing. Maybe we should look at that. And with all this money, I don't know what you're spending. Maybe it's millions, but you'd think if you'd put that money and time into curriculum, I wouldn't have to go to teacher-paid teachers to find something to teach, units that make sense, or units that go with standards that don't have fifth-grade curriculum to teach it. Piecemeal together. You guys know that. You know we do that. Anyway, Arizona, we rank at the bottom. Spending per pupil, let's start with student success, we're 46th in the nation. And now we're messing with this, ruining motivation. It's like, everybody gets a trophy. And that, we know how that worked with sports teams. It's the person that works hardest for the game and practices, they're the one that should get the trophy. Not everyone. 67 is a D+, and 86 is a B+. But now they're a three? Everybody gets a trophy, right? It just doesn't make sense to me. So student success, we're 46 out of 50. Spending per pupil, we're 48th in the nation. Lowest teacher's salary, we're 49th. Lowest graduation rate, we're 49th out of 50. Highest number of students per teacher, we're the 50th. Student counselors might be a problem because they recommend 250 counselors, and we have to one student, and we have, I'm sorry, 716 students per one counselor, so we're way behind there. I just think, hey, I'm just a teacher, I've been teaching 12 years, maybe I'm pretty new at it, but it seems like there's a lot more priorities to work on than coming here like I did over the summer and talking about this and talking about this. And frankly, it's as clear as mud. Most of the teachers don't like it. You're going to take away the motivation of students, and I think ruin some scholarships as well. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Kelsey Reed, and I have two middle school kids. So, we are not in an SBG school right now. We're in a school that has decided to start pre-SBG. So, I have, my kids are both in the gifted cohort. And up until this year, they have had homework. This year, they come home, they don't do anything. They tell me that their homework is only worth 1%, so what do they need to do it for? They don't do anything. They come home and just fiddle around after school. But recently, they both made their sports teams at the school. One of them plays baseball, one plays softball. And the academic recovery is only after school. That's part of our SBG program. So if you have to retake a test, guess what? You have to miss a game or miss practice, so you get punished. There's nothing before school. So, they struggled with that. One of them was trying to make the starting lineup for their team, and so they were trying to make decisions on whether they were going to go to sports or try to figure out retaking a test to get a better grade. Put them in a really bad position. So that was one of my frustrations. As far as the teachers are concerned, I've talked to multiple teachers, and it sounds like the biggest frustration is there are these state standards, and the rubrics are supposed to be drafted from the state standards. Well, if we have the same state standards for everything, why isn't there a standardized rubric for every course already in place? So, Mr. Salazar hit the nail on the head when he spoke. With proper implementation, SBG mindset could be great. But we basically just jumped into it headfirst, and we weren't ready. So, some of these schools that are practicing SBG, the teachers don't know what they're doing. I keep hearing this, some of the teachers are like, Kelsey, I'm sorry, we're not completely sure how to put these rubrics together, so we're just kind of, you know, doing our best, flying by the seat of our pants. That's not fair to the teachers, and it's not fair to our kids. I guess, I just feel like the mindset has some real potential, but we aren't quite ready for it. So, we kind of, we missed the boat here for both our teachers and our students. That's it.
Thank you. We have another.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jen Baldi, and I am a parent in the district. My kids are in first grade and sixth grade, and they're both in the gifted program. My main concerns regarding this have to do with preparing our children for adulthood. I don't believe that if I pitched something to my boss and didn't hit a home run, they would say, why don't we try it again next week? You can come redo this pitch. Or when I go to college and I fail my midterm because I didn't do well, or I didn't prepare myself, I'm not going to ask the professor to retake that midterm. I think he'd laugh in my face. And my other example, I've lost it, so I don't remember, but you get where I'm going. I do not think that the way this is written, it's preparing our students for adulthood, for being well-rounded students who can function in our society where you do get one chance. My other example had to do with the traits. I'm not going back to the same mechanic, who broke my car or did something wrong with my car the first time. Like, that's just not the way that life runs, right? I'm also very concerned about our teachers. Our teachers are overworked, and I agree that teaching to the standards, I think they're doing that. I'd like to see a standardized rubric, whoever said that before me. Teachers should not be tasked with this. They have far bigger issues they need to be dealing with, with the students, than to come up with a rubric that follows your standards. I think same with the curriculum. They need to be given the tools to do their job. We can't expect someone to do their job without being given those tools. So, those are my biggest concerns among others.
Would you please spell your name for, your last name for us?
My name's Baldi, B-A-L-D-I.
B-A-L-D-I, thank you.
Thank you.
There we go.
My name is Linda Slavic, Dr. Finch and governing board members. I am a teacher in the district. My school is supposed to implement standard-based grading next year. I have asked friends who teach at other schools, who are currently using standard-based grading to offer me advice, and they replied, you need to retire. They stated how time-consuming this grading system is. For instance, I teach fifth grade, and not, we don't departmentalize. So I have 28 reading standards, 17 writing standards, 41 math standards, 12 science standards, and 29 social studies standards. This results in 127 standards for fifth grade, times out by 30 students, now I'm accountable for 3,810 standards. How am I going to keep track of all this information and prove to parents their child's grades? This is a huge task that will burden teachers, causing teachers to burn out and to quit. Also, I have heard complaints that this is too subjective. Every teacher will grade using the rubric differently, school to school may not be consistent either. I have parents and students already complaining to me about not wanting our school to use standard-based grading. Parents are worried about when their child gets to high school and applying for scholarships and getting into colleges. So glad my child, my children, already graduated and received scholarships. Some students are smart enough to figure out that they are getting points for not doing their work. This isn't standard-based grading, it's passing kids who do little to no work and setting them up for failure. Some kids are just doing enough work to bring up grades to passing. My school is using traditional grading system, and we also use PLCs, retakes, goal-setting, data folders, and look at standards just like the speakers who taught tonight. We don't need standard-based grading for these essential practices. If standard-based grading becomes mandatory, then district office should provide common formative assessments and rubrics for all the teachers. The test with standards should already be made for us. Rubric should be the same if we are a unified district. I am representing a group of teachers who are too afraid to speak up, but feel that standard-based grading is not best for DVUSD.
Mrs. Slavic, sorry, would you stay for a second, please? You talked about using standards, sorry, it was in your, one of your last couple of sentences, that, and PLCs.
Yeah.
So, when you were teaching your students...
Yeah, everything that you guys talked about in the whole beginning presentation I'm doing at my school. We've been trained to do PLCs. That has nothing to do with standard-based grading. Retakes, we do that. We do goal-setting with our kids, we have data folders, and we look at standards. I don't know why we need to change the whole grading system.
So, if I had a student in your fifth grade class, and there were, what might you teach in math in fifth grade? Can you give me something you would teach to the fifth graders?
Right now, we're doing long division.
Okay, long division. So, could, if you have a student who struggled in fifth grade long division, based on what you're doing in your school, using the standards and all the PLCs, would that student know what aspect of long division they might be struggling with, if they were struggling?
Definitely. I have tests, and I look at it, and I analyze it, I do small groups and tutoring, and the students will know. We'll call them back, we do exit tickets. I'll call it back and, you know, hold a small group, and we can say, oh, you're not writing the zero down, or you forgot the decimal. Yes, my students will know their difficulty. They don't need to write it out and explain it.
But could they identify, could they explain the skill to their parents? That, I'm not, I don't know what the skill might be, but...
Right, yes, because that's what parents are saying, oh, my child's having trouble. I mean, I had that at conferences. My child had problems with 3x3s and multiplication. Yes, the kids would know that.
And when you write your test, do you, are your test questions by skill or standard?
We have, in math, I use the Driscoll curriculum, which is Eureka, and they go by topics. So we have a topic A, topic B, topic C, and yes, they have the standards.
Okay. Any other questions for you, Mrs. Fisher?
Everything you're talking about is the same as I saw in school back in 2008. Has any of this changed? This is all, it's, these are tools that have always been in a teacher's toolbox? Are, is any of this new, or is, are we just applying a grading system to it? That's kind of the first question.
What part are you talking about was new? The standard-based grading, to me, I'm just being honest, I've been teaching for over 29 years right now, I'm at 29 years, and parents, most parents are not concerned about, you know what I'm saying, looking at it. They overall want to see, how is my child doing? I can actually say, I have data to show them, okay, well, right here, your child needs improvement in this area. But not one parent has ever, you know, saying, oh my gosh, my child got a two in this standard right here. No one's ever looked at it that closely or even cared about it. They just, overall, what are your concerns about? Where are my child's weaknesses? Where's my kid's strengths? But four pages of standards is excessive. That is ridiculous. And that's what I have right now. So right now, I'm doing double the work. I'm doing traditional, like we're supposed to be doing, and I also have four pages of standards-based that I'm grading and having to input into my child's report card, my students' report cards.
Cut around about your answer to that, because you're, basically, you're doing what's always been done, and then you're doing a secondary job.
Exactly.
One of the things that I've helped parents or helped individuals do with their children is do basically gap testing. They do a general test, and they identify where gaps are within their education. Am I understanding correctly that what you're doing, the way you're doing your tests, you're catching those gaps as they are occurring?
Exactly. That's what the whole PLC was designed for. We've been doing this on Fridays, and that's why I'm so concerned, this whole beginning of your presentation, it's like, we're already doing this. So I don't know how that tied into the standard-based grading thing, but we've been doing this. So we have, every Friday, we have PLC, you know, and we do multi-school PLC now monthly, and we design CFA. We've been doing that, and we're looking at gaps, we collaborate and figure out where the weaknesses are. So we are actually doing all of this. But, like I said, it's crazy to sit there and dissect it all and not give the kids grades for that. We need to hold them accountable. And I said, we are doing that, we are finding the gaps. I think that's the problem, where are the weaknesses at? We are actually doing that. We give the, you know, we give the test, we have, you know, then we reteach it a different way. We call small groups, we have RTI every single day in our classroom, we have RTI to pull small groups. And so we are analyzing the data, we are pulling small groups, we are finding the gaps, we are identifying it, we're communicating with the parents and the students now.
Okay, so it's a standard PLC that was done when I worked in education as well. Where did the link between the PLCs and standard-based grading come in? Because we did PLCs as well, and there was never...
Exactly. That's what the whole, my guys, I was dumbfounded over there sitting down, listening to this. It's like, we're already doing all of this, and they're tying it into standard-based grading. So I'm letting you know now that PLCs that you guys designed last a year and a half, I find it wonderful, I like it, I enjoy it, and it's important to our school, but it has nothing to do with standard-based grading, to sitting there, I mean, we're already doing all of this, I'm doing a great job, you know, using the traditional grading system, and using PLC, and identifying my child's weaknesses and strengths, and I say I don't need to use standard-based grading. I mean, to me, that's, this is redundant, and it's burning out teachers.
Thank you. Mrs. Pope.
So I know I have brought this up in previous board meetings, because I was against standard-based grading. So what you stated with traditional grading, basically, you know, I've been teaching for 20 years, I've done the same thing, just construct the standard, create the CFA's. So you're doing the same thing in traditional grading. Uh, so you're doing the same thing in traditional grading, getting together with a PLC, analyzing the data, creating groups to give the students that need intervention and support.
Exactly.
And the only difference that I've seen with, uh, standard-based grading and traditional grading in Deer Valley is, is the confusion with the number. Like, for example, many teachers in the beginning would say, well, what is highly proficient? Uh, and there's no answers. So, so like the parents said, they, they got to the teacher to explain their ratings and they cannot explain it. In traditional grading, it's very easy to explain. Provide the standards that were disconstructed, provide the standards that are being tested, and provide the standards where students need support. So my question is, so you're doing the same thing that what other districts are doing with traditional grading?
Yeah, everything you said is what we're doing. Exactly right. And I said, with, when you have the 1, 2, 3, 4, I'm just being honest. When we did this with writing, we had a great writing. We had a great writing with 1, 2, 3, 4. And the years and years and years, I teach, the district kept saying we were inconsistent. So how could we be inconsistent grading writing, but be consistent on this? You are not going to be consistent. It's going to be very subjective.
Well, the main focus that I've been bringing this up in previous board meetings, the concern is the parents, the students, and the teachers. And yes, why are we giving more stress to our staff, to our parents? Uh, why can't it be more clear to some students, maybe some students that spoke here understand it? But the majority that have come to me, they don't understand it. Uh, traditional grading, also as a teacher for 20 years, we've been doing this for centuries. Deer Valley has been an A-plus student with traditional grading. We have students that went to top universities with traditional grading. So to me, the goal is, how can we unite as a community where everyone is going to be on the same page and the same understanding and not have this confusion and stress?
Thank you, Mrs. Paperman. I just want to make sure, did we get all the community members who are here to speak tonight? We have one more. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Slavic.
So my name is Chrissy Seals. My daughter goes to Union Park and we're very new. And I have to say gratitude to all the teachers and the care and concern with trying to put something together. This was a brand-new program for us, coming from a different school. And so trying to figure it out and ask teachers was a bit confusing and it's still confusing. Uh, Power Schools has As and Bs, but I hear about 1, 2, 3, 4. My daughter can retake. She, I've got two kids. One graduated from Sandra Day O'Connor. He's in college at Texas A&amp;M, going to engineering. Uh, he went through the, the, everything that he needed to do to be successful, uh, through the standards program. And it was not easy. Uh, he studied hard. He had to get extracurriculars. He had to get a scholarship. He's now in the Air Force. He's a pilot. There's a lot of things that he had to do to get there and it wasn't easy. My second child, she has a harder time in school. So I do appreciate the concepts behind the, 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 the program that's trying to be implemented, trying to get students to really understand, because she struggles. She's not like my son. I appreciate the opportunities for her to take retakes. However, what I have found is that she still doesn't always understand. She's just as good as memorizing as my son was. Does not mean that she understands it. Um, the other thing that really hit home for us is that I got a call from one of the teachers saying, thank you, your daughter was the only one that did her homework, um, which I was shocked. Um, and my husband and I are full-time parent, are full-time workers. My husband works late shift, I work early shift. We work probably 50 to 60 hours a week. And we're pretty hard on our kids. And so we, we try to enforce good habits. And so I actually, my husband and I went back to school. So I am at Purdue University. My first round of college was for engineering. My second round, I'm an executive at an insurance company. And so I'm going back for leadership. So at Purdue, I have rubrics and I have ABCs. I have the normal standards. So I've learned both, both concepts and I actually wrote a paper on it because I wanted to understand it. I didn't understand it. And the school has done a great job to communicate. The teachers have tried really hard. They're, they're fantastic. And I do love the concept. But here's what I found in my research. Um, 88% of students that were polled at Pepperdine University that went to both, found that they would not have been prepared adequately for college with parts of the way the standard-based program works. It does not teach them the rigors of study. Um, they said that it did not prepare them enough for schools and colleges and what the university's expected. Now, again, I love a lot of the program. I just think there's pieces that we need to really figure out first. The second thing that I found is one of the largest school districts in California, San Diego, they basically rolled it out and said it was a fiasco. Um, it was very hard for the teachers. It was very hard for the students and very hard for the parents. Uh, there were students that did lose scholarships in San Diego. The other piece of, uh, information that I found as I was researching this was in the state of Maine. The Maine rolled out legislation that forced schools to go into this standard-based program. Um, they ended up reversing the, the legal, uh, changes because 38% of the schools said, we can't do this. This is not working. We're not ready. And here's, and here's my thoughts, though. I think that there's a lot of great things with standard-based grading. I think there's a lot of opportunities that I see for both of my kids who are very different that could benefit from this. But I just don't know if it's quite ready yet. And I think part of it, some of the parents and some of the teachers have said that we just need more information. I think it's an education, making sure the teachers feel like they know what they're doing so that it's consistent. Parents feel like it's consistent. And part of me feels like it's not fair for us to put kids in high school through this when they've been taught this program of the normal grades, the whole process, and just switch this up on them is really just not fair. So one of the things that I actually wrote in my paper for my university, uh, paper was, if we do this, we just need to pull back a little bit and maybe start with the younger kids and don't force our students in the middle of the program to go through this because it's really tough on them. But again, just to be fair, my daughter, it's, it's been great for her to be able to retake tests, but if she's the only one that's doing her homework, that's a little bit concerning for the rest, the parents, I'm sure.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much for your comments. Brendan?
I appreciate the opportunity to speak again and talk your ear off a little bit.
We have about two minutes because we have to wrap up. Sorry about that.
All good. I will speak fast.
Quickly, Brendan.
Uh, I just want to cite the fact that I am here voluntarily. The, my principal simply asked me to come here to speak. She gave me absolutely no direction. I actually asked if there was anything that she wanted me to say while I was here. And she said, no. She said, please just put your opinion out there. And I said, okay. Um, some debunking of myths. Uh, I want to cite the fact that I've audited classes at Stanford, Harvard, Yale, uh, and got redos from those professors when I didn't do as well on assignments as I wanted to. Um, and by the way, that's subjective. If I wasn't satisfied with a 92 and I wanted to get a 99 to demonstrate complete and total proficiency over something, then that's my prerogative to do so. Um, I've also taken classes at the state level, uh, at ASU Barrett Honors College and through U of A programs and have also gotten the ability to redo through those professors. Um, to follow up some of the comments made by the parents, there does need to be assistance from the district. This cannot be completely a teacher thing. Uh, I realize that we are short-staffed and that we have a lack of materials, but there does need to be assistance from the district in order to make this happen. Um, one comment was made with, uh, parent-teacher conferences and how that is a form of checking in. Those happen twice a year in elementary and once in high school. Those happen to be a moot point, um, as far as getting into the students' evaluation. Um, this does need to be standardized. We, uh, we can't operationalize learning. Um, one of my AP psychology terms, uh, sorry, IB psychology terms, operationalizing, uh, making sure that it actually works before we do it. So making sure that it's standardized and everyone understands it, uh, as the past parents said, before we actually roll it out. And so PLC can work hand-in-hand with, um, standards-based grading. We just need to make sure that it's, it's an extension and not a hindrance. So not necessarily more work, but something to help them, uh, further dissect the level of learning done by the students. Um, RTI, uh, was mentioned. That also serves for a redo, just not a formal one, because you're still relearning the information. And so whether you get credit or not for that is based on standardized, uh, grading. Uh, percentages, uh, with the studies were also off. I looked them up in relation to the 1, 2, 3, and 4 scales. So those, uh, will want to be reviewed. Uh, SBG, uh, doesn't actually imply after and before-school assistance. It was just provided, um, at specific schools. And so I want to clarify that that isn't part of the package. Uh, let's see. And then also, uh, percentages don't imply learning. It was said a lot of times that you won't be prepared for college. I feel very prepared for college. I know a lot of the IB seniors, the IB juniors, and I have friends all over the district who feel prepared for college. Uh, I can definitely empathize with the parents here and understand the concerns because it is a new concept. However, if it's explained, if it is given in a variety of mediums and it is thoroughly ingrained into our district, I believe it can be effective.
Brendan, I'm going to cut you off because you're at 8:29. And what I'm going to say is, Brendan, you've said a lot of good things. Um, and I wrote down what I thought you said was most important, was implemented correctly. And so that's more of the discussion. I appreciate everybody who's here. I'm sorry, I know we didn't get to a couple of teachers and we have some information that's coming out to us in the Friday update. There is, I, I think that standard-based mindset and learning at the standard and the skill level is foundational. Um, and I don't think you'd get a disagreement from your governing board on that. It, it is some of the other pieces that we have not necessarily implemented across the board as well at all places is part of the concern. Um, with that, we'll, uh, we'll be adjourned here at 8:30. So we'll have to have a further discussion at our next board meeting about where we want to go from here.
I have one, one thing. It's 8:29.
Go ahead.
Um, just for the Friday update. If, I think Dr. Gallagher and perhaps Jenna, who's not here, interestingly enough, um, the amount of students that are being graded by standard-based learning and also the amount of, the number of teachers that are teaching with our standards-based learning? Grading, learning? I think we're into learning, so however you want to put it, standard-based grading or standard-based learning?